Good evening, and welcome to the November 22nd, 2016, meeting of the Millbrae City Council. Could we have a roll call, please?
We have four members of the council present. Mayor Oliva is excused this evening.
Thank you. Could you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, part under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is a presentation of commendation to undersheriff Tricia Sanchez in recognition of her promotion to undersheriff. So, if you'd like, could you join me at the podium?
You'd probably need a photo with Roger and the two sheriffs.
So, the city of Millbrae is commending undersheriff Tricia Sanchez. Whereas undersheriff Tricia Sanchez began her law enforcement more than 29 years ago as a San Mateo County Sheriff's Officer Reserve Deputy. She went on to work as a correctional officer and a deputy sheriff in patrol and investigations. She continued to work her way through the ranks to sergeant and then lieutenant. She also served as the commander of the Sheriff's Office Investigations Division and the San Mateo County Narcotics and Vehicle Theft Task Force. In 2003, she was promoted to captain, making her the first female captain in the history of San Mateo County Sheriff's Office. In 2008, she was appointed to Assistant Sheriff. As an integral member of the Sheriff's Executive Team, she oversaw the Corrections Division and the planning and construction of the Maple Street Correctional Center. And undersheriff Sanchez holds both a Bachelor of Arts Degree in Business Management and a Master of Administration's Degree in Public Sector Leadership from St. Mary's College in California. She's a graduate of the United States Military Academy's West Point Leadership Program, presented in conjunction with the Los Angeles Police Department. Whereas as undersheriff, she's now responsible for the day-to-day operations of the Sheriff's Office and reports directly to the sheriff. Therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby commend undersheriff Tricia Sanchez. So, congratulations.
Woo! Congratulations.
Can we get everybody in uniform to come up for a photo, please?
I want a picture, too.
About everybody on the council.
You guys first.
Usually, she just comes over here. That's what this chair's for.
Whoa, 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 wait. You're gonna need to turn around and face us. There you go. That looks nice. Thank you. Thank you, guys, for being here.
Are you safe, if you mind?
Well, thank you so much, Vice Mayor Hollibur and members of the city council. I'm very honored to be recognized by the city of Millbrae. This is a very special place to live and work, and it's steered by strong leaders in enhancing the lives of the community, and we're just honored to be a part of it as your police services area for the city of Millbrae. And I think, as I embark on my new role in supporting Sheriff Carlos Bolanos for the Sheriff's Office, we're going to continue to strengthen our relationships with the community and our youth and the various programs that we have. And I think there is truly power in partnering, and I know partnering with the city of Millbrae as we have done, we've made great strides in supporting your efforts. I think there's more we can do with community engagement with our youth. We've had some successful initiatives that you've participated in and the business leaders of this area on the topics of human trafficking, again, community engagement, youth programs that we have, and providing prevention and reduction initiatives. So, I think that it's, you know, a great initiative that we have. I'm honored. I wouldn't be in the position that I'm in if I didn't have when I first started, as was noted in 1987, as a volunteer reserve deputy, to have great mentors and role models along the way, not only within the Sheriff's Office, but also in the community. And so, I know the hard work and determination, any success I have, it's because the people in this room and our employees that are just dedicated and do a great job for the organization day in and day out. So, I'm very honored to be recognized here and have this moment of opportunity to say a few words in gratitude for all of you. And again, so, thank you very much, and I hope everyone has a great Thanksgiving and holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hollibur.
I just also want to thank and congratulate the undersecretary. I'm just great to see, sorry, Scheck share, I'm still thinking elections in my head. So, I just wanted to say that it's just wonderful to have very skilled and very qualified people in positions, especially when we come a long way where we have more women and more diversity in our workforce. And that says a lot about our character as a community and how we want to promote and encourage anybody who's willing to take up the mantle and go through the hardship of getting promoted, and it's not easy. And I've seen the undersheriff in the community a lot, so that's also a credit to you and your policing force, and I think that's gonna bring a lot of credibility to the Sheriff's Department. So, I'd like to congratulate you and your staff, because obviously, you're just as good as your staff, so that's how we feel on the council as well. And I think this is a great step forward for all of us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for your service, and we look forward to continue working with you. Next, we have a presentation from our Bay Area Water and Supply Conservation Agency Board Member and former mayor of Millbrae, Dan Quigg.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Vice Mayor Hollibur, councilmember, city manager, Marshal Rains, and the staff. I'm here this evening as your Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency Representative. We're known as BASQUA, and we use these acronyms, but I thought I'd give you the full name first. And I'm representing, and I want to represent and give you an up-to-date issue on two items that are facing our community that are very important. The first item is the update on the Bay Area Delta Plan Environmental Report for 2012. In the Bay Area Plan, the State Water Board proposed a 35% unimpaired water flow from February to June from three rivers in California, including the Tuolumne River, to protect fish and wildlife. The Tuolumne River is our main source of water for the Bay Area. SFPUC and BASQUA provided comments on the 212 environmental report and said it was inadequate. The State Water Board did not analyze the full effects that this water shortage would have for the Bay Area. With the Bay Area Delta Plan, the economic impact to the region would be devastating. Water shortages forecast would be between 42% and 52%. An economic analysis showed that these shortages would result in an annual impact of 140,000 to 180,000 jobs lost in the Bay Area and a $37,000,049,000 decrease in sales transactions. Based on the comments from the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission and BASQUA, the environmental document was recirculated in September 15, 2016, just currently. BASQUA and the SFPUC are working together to evaluate the impact of this new document on our water supply and economy. BASQUA will submit detailed legal and technical comments on this report. The second concern that I want to bring to you is the Mountain Tunnel. This was constructed in 1918, almost 100 years old. It is 19 miles long. This is the first major area where water flows from the Hetch-Etchy Reservoir. The upper seven miles is through granite. The lower 12 miles flows through concrete tunnels. The last major inspection was in 2008, and it revealed a number of locations where the concrete lining was deteriorating. Three major activities are underway: excess, the improvements needed; tunnel inspection and repair in early 2017; long-term tunnel improvements, either a bypass tunnel or redo the concrete lining and repair. So, that's what's going on. Most of the Hetch-Etchy water system, various deliveries throughout the Bay Area are very easy because there's many pipelines. In fact, crossing the bay, there is three pipelines, and there's a pipeline that runs down along San Jose. So, in the event of an earthquake, we would certainly get water to the Bay Area. But if the mountain tunnel fails, no water flows to the Bay Area. There's no alternative source to deliver this water if the mountain tunnel fails. BASQUA has discussed this issue with the SFPUC for many years. Because of our constant reminder of this dangerous situation, they have finally agreed to shut down the system for a complete inspection in 2017. On a much more positive note, in November of this year, the storage lever for the Hetch-Etchy system is 82% capacity, and I will give you some details on the capacity of the system. Thank you. Appreciate it. Comments?
Thank you, Mr. Quigg. Any questions? Councilwoman Schneider.
Commissioner Quigg, sorry I'm that title. Couple of questions that have to do with resiliency and the water system. Does BASQUA deal at all at looking at gray water systems coming in? So, for example, in the Millbrae-specific area, new developments are supposed to put in gray water piping. We still have to get our gray water over from the plant, but we have a golf course, we have fields, and we have parks, and to me, some of our long-term planning, even if it's gonna cost us money, should include looking at gray water systems for major water users. And I'm also curious, given that we're hearing that one of the first things that may happen out of Washington is an infrastructure measure, that we are available or ready to accept funding if we can get those projects built. So, what's BASQUA doing on recycled water?
BASQUA currently isn't working on any recycled water. They do offer different programs on water saving for toilets, water saving for washing machines, and they give rebates. They also have classes and information about water-saving plants, but they have not done anything on the gray water projects, although it's certainly something that can be considered. And as I sat where you did, I agree that there is places where we could provide recycled water, especially the golf course in Millbrae, which uses a lot of water. The problem with that is it's extremely expensive to bring the piping from our sewer treatment plant over to the golf course.
I just don't want to lose track of it. I think we need to keep hammering it.
No, I understand, and you know, you guys are a governing body that you can work with that and move it forward, but you gotta look at the ramifications on the cost of that project. Wayne.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for representing us on BASQUA. You've been doing a fabulous job. How many years of service to this community? Thirty-something years, is that right? Yeah, so, very impressive, and thank you. So, I did, just wanted to address the gray water issue. We brought this, I think we brought this issue up like, I don't know, six years ago, and we looked at, we, as a bay, put in like 500 million gallons of treated water into the waters every day, 500 million gallons a day. So, we did talk to, who's, I forgot, the executive officer? Nicole, Nicole what?
Nicole Sansula.
Sansula. So, yes, right, thank you. And she said that BASQUA was looking into water recharge, which is a little different from gray water.
The recharge system, San Francisco Public Utilities Commission is looking into that right now. What they want to do is take excess amount of water and pump it into some wells, including the wells into San Bruno. So, in the event of a drought situation, there'll be water available through these wells that are not currently being used because some have been depleted. So, San Francisco is trying to make arrangements with San Bruno and other communities that have wells that have not been operating for years or have been operating at low efficiency to pump water into those wells when they have high efficiency. Right now, in fact, there's 82% water supply in the Hetch-Etchy system, which is more than normal at this point, so they could take excess water at this point and place it someplace into wells. So, San Francisco Public Utilities Commission is working to get this done. But you gotta understand that the BASQUA part of this is two-thirds of it, so San Francisco's only one-third. So, any kind of improvements into the system, we will be paying the 22 agencies that buy water from San Francisco, we'll be paying our two-thirds cost. So, this rebuild of this mountain tunnel is an excellent example. If this, if they can line it with concrete and cement, it will be less costly, but if they have to drill a new tunnel for that length of, you know, 21 miles, it's gonna cost a lot of money, and we, as Bay Area water users, will pay two-thirds of that cost.
And so, we're gonna be expecting an increase, water increase, to our water bill?
Well, I mean, you know, this, you know, when I'm explaining, sometimes the public does not understand why water bills go up, and, you know, we don't have complete control over the water system. We are a partner in the water system. We are one partner out of 23 in the Bay Area water user, and San Francisco's a major player. It's a San Francisco system, but we have to pay our proportionate shares, and we have no control over the cost of the system. The thing what happens in the system, if things have to get repaired, we pay our cost. The only thing that we do not pay a cost for, if a repair in the system involves electricity, we do not pay for that. If they have penstock repairs and the penstocks are predominantly used to generate electricity, we do not pay for those costs.
And then one other comment, sorry. I think I'd like to encourage our council to continue to look at putting purple water lines into new projects if we want to save water, and plus, the supply of water is getting, it's gonna be really tight, because I sit on the associate, associate government of Bay, associate Bay Area government, and they were talking about another extra 100, 200,000 more people in the Bay Area, and water, of course, we know is tight. So, in order to address those shortage of water issues, we need to also take aggressive actions now and require those purple lines in some of these larger buildings. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Quigg?
Yes.
First and foremost, thank you so much for all your years of service on BASQUA, because we do need strong representation there. And BASQUA, for those who do not know, really oversees what San Francisco does. For years, we all paid into the San Francisco system, and nowhere did the money go but maybe the general fund in San Francisco. But now, thanks to BASQUA, every year, I believe, San Francisco Water System has to report to the state legislature as to the safety of the system throughout the Bay Area, and that is the purpose of BASQUA.
That is absolutely true. In addition to that, every year, BASQUA does an audit, and last year, we did an audit, and we have to pay a proportionate charge for their services in San Francisco, their building, and their people in San Francisco. We pay two-thirds of that cost. But what happened last year, when they submitted the bill to us, they included the total cost of the building, and we found out that one floor is rented out to somebody else, and we said that's not our appropriate cost, so we had, we went back to them on audit, and they had to give back a million dollars.
Good, good. Among other things. No, and I really appreciate, too, BASQUA's response to some of these reports that come out that are less than beneficial to the system as a whole, particularly this mountain tunnel, because they let things go for years and years and years. Now that we're coming on 100 years, I don't think, without BASQUA pushing San Francisco PUC to make these improvements and secure our water system, any of this would have happened.
The mountain tunnel's a perfect example. In 2008, they knew it had a problem, and it's in 16 now. It's eight years later. They've been operating that tunnel, knowing that there was deficiency in that tunnel, and BASQUA's been pushing to shut that tunnel down, get it checked out, and get it repaired.
Well, thank you very much for your work, and please stay on it, and thank everyone at BASQUA for me. Thanks.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Quigg. And it's my understanding these projects are several billion dollars, correct? The Hetch-Etchy projects? Mr. Mayor? Mayor Quigg?
You know, I was gonna mention that, but I don't know if, you know, if that was appropriate. You know, the whole system is being improved because of legislation that was caused by Gina's father. And the PUC system was falling apart, kinda like the mountain tunnel, and it's because of the efforts of her father with legislation that all of this is happening. The whole system is being rebuilt now, and it's gonna be much a better system. Like I said, there's the pipes that go into the bay. The pipes that go into the bay now have joints that can move with an eight-point earthquake without breaking. Even if they did break, there's four pipes that go under the bay that can bring water to San Francisco. Everything in the whole system is being rebuilt except the mountain tunnel, which is a key portion, which that's why BASQUA is complaining about that. But, you know, recently, here in Millbrae, up on the top of the hill, up on Ridgewood, they just put all new piping in up there. In fact, three homeowners were very happy, and I went back and reported that when these three homeowners were, the pipeline was coming through, they took out a bunch of trees, eucalyptus trees, so it improved their views, so they probably picked up $100,000, $150,000 for the house. So, they were certainly happy with BASQUA's improvement program.
Yeah, I just had a question, one question. These projects at Hetch-Etchy, the last number that I'd heard was roughly $4 billion?
Oh, the numbers, okay, I'll go back to the numbers. In fact, I can leave you a copy of it. The economic analysis shows that the shortage would result in an impact of 140,000 to 188,000 jobs in the Bay Area and $37,000,049,000 decrease in sales transactions without supplying that water. And, you know, this is talking about the 2012 report, which is a 35% uninterrupted flow. Now, they're considering a 40% uninterrupted flow on the new program, which is what we're gonna respond to. So, it is pretty devastating. It would be, reducing that water flow would be worse than the worst-ever drought that we ever had. So, it's pretty bad.
So, I believe the vice mayor was asking, do we know the cost of the improvement projects?
On this one, no, we don't, because they're gonna assess it now. They're gonna, they're gonna shut it down probably in January, February, and take a look and see what's happening, and they might do it in phases. So, you know, depending on what they find, but they know that it's already bad in 2008, so we'll see where it's at.
Thank you, Mayor Quigg. Next, we have a presentation of the Millbrae Library Annual Report with Library Manager Tom Ball.
Okay, good evening, Vice Mayor Hollibur and members of the city council, Ms. Rains, Ms. Lewis. My name is Tom Ball. I'm the library manager for the Millbrae Library, and I'm pleased to present the San Mateo County Library's annual report for the fiscal year 2015-2016. A little background on the library system. The San Mateo County Free Public Library was established by the County Board of Supervisors in 1912. In 1913, a levy was approved, and the majority of our funding still comes from property taxes today. Approximately 280,000 people live within the boundaries of the library's legal taxing district, when that covers 351 square miles. Today, our 12 community libraries, One Bookmobile and the E-Library, provide library services to the 11 cities and unincorporated areas of the county that are part of the Joint Powers Authority. One of the most significant activities this year was the development and approval of our new strategic plan, and this is our new vision statement. I normally don't read the slides, so I imagine you can read it. More than 7,500 community members, volunteers, and staff contributed input and feedback, and this is our new mission statement. A little bit of its cutoff there, it's San Mateo County Library's "strengthen our community by creating an inclusive sense of place and an environment for learning." Three high-level strategic goals were developed to describe the priorities of the organization and what we hope to accomplish, and that includes cultivating an active presence, establishing a foundation for early literacy, and understanding community needs, and promoting meaningful library services. Compared to other public libraries in the nation, the San Mateo County Library is a high-performing organization. The San Mateo County Libraries are recognized as one of the nation's top libraries based on use of services. We were named a four-star library for the fourth, eighth consecutive year by Library Journal. We rank 18th nationwide and were second in California among similar-peer libraries. And our services and performance stats illustrate this success. Excuse me. This professional award is based on several performance measures that we track, including circulation per capita and library visits per capita. This most recent data is from fiscal year 2014-15. This fiscal year, however, we circulated 3.3 million items, and the number of library visits equaled 2.2 million. Locally, Millbrae circulated over 466,000 items and had over 362,000 visits. And here are some of the statistics for the Millbrae Library in fiscal year 2015-16. As you can see, Millbrae remains a destination library for our city and the surrounding areas. There is significant crossover between the patrons of San Bruno and Millbrae and Burlingame Libraries. Reference is still active in libraries, although the internet can easily answer the most basic questions. However, patrons still rely on the authoritative information that librarians are trained to find and evaluate. And you can see that Millbrae patrons relied on us for over 15,000 of their questions this past year. As part of our efforts to promote early childhood literacy and continuing forward all the way into adulthood, we offer hundreds of storytimes a year, both in the library and off-site, in local schools, daycares, and preschools. This shows that attendance at storytimes is very robust, at over 13,000 attendees who heard hundreds of different stories in a variety of storytimes and settings. We have baby storytimes, toddler, preschool, school age. They're all geared for the appropriate comprehension level and to create a community of readers who read for fun and relaxation and enlightenment. A musical storytime that I lead adds a music component that has been proven to improve reading comprehension and attention levels in young children. Programming is another area of interest for the community, as you can see in the number and attendance of the varying programs that we offer. Our Mid-Autumn Festival is probably our consistently biggest draw in terms of attendance, along with our popular open houses that usually feature a musical act. One year, it was a Beatles tribute band, and last year, it was a jazz group, both of which drew hundreds of people to the library on a Tuesday evening. We now offer a regular film night, in fact, there's one going on right now, in which a movie is presented and a discussion follows. Our popular T3 afternoons, T3 is our Teens at 3, continues to provide older kids with alternatives for play, learning, and socializing every week, and our docent programs from the museums for all ages are coming from the DeYoung and the Legion of Honor. I just wanted to show you a few. coming from the DeYoung and the Legion of Honor. I just wanted to show you a few photos from this past Mid-Autumn Festival, which is a harvest festival that is celebrated in four different cultures that are part of the Millbrae community: Chinese, Vietnamese, Korean, and Japanese. Pictured above are performers from the California Chinese Youth Symphony who play traditional instruments. The accomplishments of these young kids is absolutely amazing at how good this is. This young woman in particular plays something that looks like a huge zither, and she plays it with her hands, and hammering is just astounding. Second below is the Korean Dance Troop, and below that is the Satsuki Kai Singing Group, which was formed in the late '40s after World War II, and is dedicated to providing cultural understanding between the Japanese and the American cultures. Our top voter here is the Red Panda Acrobats, which brought down the house. Below that is the Millbrae Youth Chamber Orchestra. And the bottom picture is the fantastic selection of mooncakes, which are part of that ceremony every year. And those were baked by Suzanne's Bakery right here in Millbrae. And they provided the mooncakes for the entire system. Here is one of our catchphrases, "Open for Access," and this actually refers to championing technology and closing the digital divide. And significant effort has been made to support the mobile and digital needs of library users. And here are some of the services we provide. Patrons now have the opportunity to choose from an increasing number of options for gaining access to the Internet, obtaining downloadable materials, and utilizing an array of online learning and information resources, including the ability to borrow Wi-Fi hotspots, laptops, and e-readers. Like, for example, last year, we checked out over 13,000 Wi-Fi hotspots. Our new E-Library had over 4.4 million visits. We are teaching technology every day in the library. We are supporting the maker movement through 3D printing and other maker technologies. We plan on installing a maker space in the Millbrae Library in the coming year. As far as streaming services, which is where everything is going, we now subscribe to Hoopla, which is a film streaming service, Freegal, which streams music, and Flipster, which streams magazines, many popular magazines, including Consumer Reports. Our public computer hours throughout the system, 206,458 separate sessions for that. Our wireless connections, we won over 1.4 million. Here in Millbrae, we had over 92,000 separate, unique sessions on our computers in the library for a total of 57,000 hours of service. And continuing in the volunteerism that permeates Millbrae community society, we had over 936 volunteers at the library who gave us 5,175 hours of their time. Open for Learning, this is our commitment to enriching our communities, supporting family literacy, and lifelong learning. The library has successfully implemented programs which address the early learning needs of children and families, as demonstrated by the expanded summer learning program, and customized tutoring and homework support services, and innovative hands-on learning instruction for parents and caregivers to improve early childhood development. Our cultural programming and events, we had over 11,000 programs and events offered, 317,000 program attendees, this is across the system. In Millbrae, we had 19,546 program attendees. In Summer Learning, 57% of county youth participated in the Summer Learning Program. Here in Millbrae, that was 3,217 children and teens participated in that program. We were also honored by the Urban Libraries Council for a Top Innovator Award for our Find It program, which replaced the Dewey Decimal System. Open for Transformation, that means creating welcoming and well-equipped facilities and reaching beyond the walls. Because spaces and facilities continue to evolve in order to increase flexibility and respond to the changing nature of library services. The fully renovated Woodside Library reopened in April, and planning efforts are underway in Atherton, Brisbane, East Palo Alto, Half Moon Bay, and Pacifica to update aging facilities with libraries that meet 21st century service needs. Staff are also configuring spaces in order to increase maker programming with a special emphasis on 3D printing. We plan a major launch of 3D printing services in the library in January. In Millbrae, we're doing a lot of outreach, particularly with regard to the strategic plan. I do want to share a couple of just stories of impact from people that use the Millbrae Library. And this has to do with the Wi-Fi Combos loaning program, in which you can borrow a laptop and a Wi-Fi hotspot to use for a week, and then you bring that back. We had two adult patrons, a woman and a man, who used the combos to retool their skill sets. They were out of work. They had no computer. So they borrowed these things, and they retooled. They both are now gainfully employed. Both came to tell us about their success in finding a job, and they both credited that lending program for making all the difference. They couldn't even apply for jobs except online. And neither had a personal computer. They had to give them up when they became unemployed. Another great story I had, I have this badge, and I always forget to take it off. So I'm in a store, and some guy comes up to me and goes, "You know, I love the library. I bought my car there." You know, I was like, "Really? That's great." Yeah, because he used the computers there to do it. So this year, we saw some of our most impactful and noteworthy changes, including our first rebranding in more than a decade. Our new logo consists of a simple and imaginative burst of knowledge, and it represents the spread of information, our family of libraries, and the excitement that emanates from learning something new. The triangles can represent many things, like moments of discovery, exchanges of information, conversation, and connections. Many pieces represent the numerous people that make up the library system, and the community, and the overall circle shape speaks to our libraries being a focal point in our communities. In order to fully capture the idea that we have many locations, but we are all part of a one unified vision, we have made the switch from the San Mateo County Library to the San Mateo County Libraries. Our corresponding brand tagline, "Open for Exploration," extends the logo spirit by conveying the essence of who we are, our mission, and our vision. Here's our little thing. Get that thing going. There you go. And this is a video that was developed for that. You're going to play, aren't you? I don't think you are. Come on, baby. Nope, not going to do it. Okay, well, it's a quick, fun thing. Come on. You going to go? Look at it. You click it, and it's not responding. That's typical. Oh, no, now we're going to...
She's got the magic touch, Tom.
Just got the magic touch. I know, I clicked it in the middle, and now we've got the circle, the circle of death. Is there? No, we'll just move on. Okay, anyway, it's one of those with music and flashing shapes and kids laughing and things like that. Yeah, anyway, we can get that to you. Come on. Whoops. Come on. There we go. Let's go on. "Open for Exploration." And we're going to move. Okay, here is a quote from Congressman Jackie Speer. "Our county library is leading America into a new era of library services, and is an example of America's engine of enlightenment, thriving in a diverse and challenging environment." And I would like to thank this City Council, and particularly you, Mr. Holber, for being our representative at the Library JPA. It's incredibly important that you are there every time, and I know that you are. So I appreciate that, and thank you. I would like to thank the city staff for your consistent support for the library. And I can't say enough about the city staff, the Park and Rec, Public Works, City Administration. We so appreciate it, and that doesn't happen everywhere. The Millbrae Library is a civic point of pride, and we all are in this together to make it what it is. I want to thank our library staff for their tremendous work and their just unending creativity, and the Friends of the Library for their dedication and their advocacy. I thank you for having me here this evening, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. And from serving on the JPA Board, one of, in my opinion, one of the most impactful programs the library's had is the Summer Learning Program that we've had the past few years, and expanded quite a bit. You know, there's, with a lot of kids, you know, the gap between first grade and second grade, second grade and third grade, kids lose a lot of knowledge during that gap if they're not going to summer school or doing other types of programs. So our program does help with summer reading, and lots of different activities that they do: field trips, healthy meals served at the camps. And, you know, the kids that go through those summer reading camps, they don't experience any learning loss over the summer, and they're ready to start the school year. So that's something that I've been very pleased to learn about. It certainly touched me quite a bit, and I'm happy to see that continue going and continue growing. Any questions? Yes, Ms. Papman.
Mr. Ball, to the Friends of the Millbrae Library and your entire staff, it really is a jewel for our entire community. And now that everybody's getting their tax bill and can see right on there the library bond, it is well worth it. It really, really is. Just warms our heart, and everybody talks about the Millbrae Library. People come in from other cities, just how wonderful it is, the programs, the music, and me, and all those. They're just fantastic. My compliments, and please keep up the good work.
Sure. And I compliment you for the building that was constructed here, because it is a jewel. It really is. I think it's the crown jewel of the system, but don't tell any of the others I said that.
Councilwoman Shutter?
I just want to say thank you. In the years, your staff have always been really great at working with me when I was just a member of the public in hosting film series and discussion series. So I can call out Darren. I don't want to lose anybody else. Everybody's always been really good. I have one complaint, though. Those music nights are really fun. They're always on a Tuesday, and I can only come for the first half an hour now because it's council night. So maybe consider having them on the non-council night, then it's Park and Rec night. But they're really great. I very much appreciate them. My folks are huge library fans, so I want to say thank you. I want to point one other thing out. I know some of our high school students are interns in the county library system. I can think of two of them are over in Half Moon Bay working on reading programs. They love it. So I thank you for the opportunity for our youth to have those internship programs.
That's a super program. I love that.
Sorry, real quick. So I understand that the City of Pacifica voters were not quite as smart as the Millbrae voters. Their library bond did not pass.
I live in Pacifica, so I worked on that.
My apologies. It would be lovely to see them get behind. If there's anything we can do, invite them over to Millbrae. Show them what a wonderful thing...
I have done that repeatedly.
Really? Okay.
I actually was the manager over there for nine and a half years and worked on that before I came here. They offered me this opportunity to come here, and I jumped at it, because we needed, you know, I wanted to manage a library of this size and this busy.
Tom and I had had the chance to work together before, so we're both very, very happy to be back together again. It's been a real pleasure.
Well, if we can do anything to help our neighbors in Pacifica, because it really would be a benefit to their community as well.
Yeah, there's a couple, you know, particularly Mike O'Neill, who's, you know, is our JPA rep in Pacifica. And, you know, he's very much a library, a new library supporter. So I have had the former manager, Ruth Stout, go over and talk with that Friends Group and that foundation. And, you know, we're borrowing a lot. In fact, to tell you the truth, they just, the polling showed that it was not going to pass, which is the same thing that happened here. And they said, the pollsters said, "No, you shouldn't go for it." And you all decided to go for it, and you got it. And we decided to go for it over there because of what happened here. Now, we didn't get to the two-thirds, and...
How close was it?
It was at 54%. So we weren't close, really weren't close. But I'm pushing them now to lobby Kevin Mullen and Jerry Hill to introduce a measure to lower the threshold to 55% for library buildings, because we, the precedent is there for the school construction. And we are an obvious and easily provable partner in that effort. So I would love to see that happen. I think that's what will make it happen.
That would be a great piece of legislation.
Yeah.
Before we let Tom go, I just want to make sure that the public and the council are fully aware that our city clerk, in her career path growth, has taken on attending and representing the city at the staff level for libraries. So a lot of the work that we see coming forward, she's participating. And in that, I appreciate the thank yous for all the staff support, but I want to make sure and land it where it's really getting the work done. Nice work.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis.
Yeah, that's critical. Angela is on our operations committee.
Councilwoman Lee?
Yeah, thank you, Tom, for that presentation. I think it's the library and what you guys are doing is an example of what the world is coming to. And the library is the forefront of engaging and finding unique opportunities to leverage. And I think that as cities, our cities are not immune, that we don't move as fast as the library, which is amazing, because the library is just taking the trends and seeing what's going on, and really using your mission statement, you're trying to do innovative things to make it happen. And that's, I think, is the key to this library's success, your work, and other librarians. It's not a library, per se. It is not just the crown jewel. It is a working cog of a successful community. And it's because you provide not just books, not just opportunities for knowledge, but you allow people to really take the opportunity to better themselves and help the community grow. So in a, and into today's culture, which is, you know, the 3D printers, the Internet of Things, your innovation of renting out Wi-Fis, that is all very unique things that I think this city and many cities really envy, the opportunity to affect people. And I think those are the intangible people don't see. So it's not a library. It's not just a library. It is a, it is almost like its own little city. And I think that the fact that you have 362,000,000 people come through that library, which is what, like you said, the 13th busiest or best library in the nation, congratulations again on that. I think our city should be very, very proud of that. And our city is, our folks demand that type of service, too.
And they support it.
And they support that. And, I mean, I'll tell you, I grew up on a library in Pacifica when there was a store, size of a store, in Lindemar, in Lindemar. And they had, and I went, my mom was the biggest treat to go out there and get books every week. My parents, my parents would take me there every week to get books. And so I have to echo Councilwoman Papman's, that it's not just a library. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And I also wanted to mention, I think you had mentioned, that we have an extremely dedicated Friends of the Library group here in Millbrae. They put a lot of time, a lot of effort into our library and our programs that we offer. And they'll be having a book sale, I believe, the weekend after next?
Yeah, I think the first weekend in...
First weekend in December. So stop by the library. Lots of books there you can get for a great bargain.
I think membership's only $2, too.
Oh, yeah. It's like, individuals, like $10 and so forth. But buying those books, that goes directly back to all those programs that I was talking about. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for those presentations. Now, we go to the city manager with the agenda overview and staff briefing.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So this evening, we have, first of all, an informational report on bills and claims received since the last council meeting just a week ago. We also have a city attorney, as soon as I finish, will give you a report out on the closed session that was conducted on November 15. We have, following public communications, three items of consent. The first is considering a second reading of an ordinance that would amend the municipal code regarding littering and dumping of garbage, followed by considering a resolution that would authorize city manager to execute agreements with, an agreement with, Tripepe Smith for Communication Services for the city, followed by appointments to committees and commissions. And trying to simplify and clarify this action, this is to appoint those members of your committees and commissions whose terms have expired and have requested reappointment. We have no public hearings this evening, but we do have a new, an item of existing business, excuse me, that is an update on all the general plan work, excuse me, that's been done. We've had several workshops in the downtown area and... We've had several workshops in the downtown area and staff is present this evening to report out on those. Following existing business, we have council comments, and then we recommend that you adjourn. I have a couple items of update about a lot of things that are going on in the community I want to take just a minute and talk about. First, in the area of public works, if you haven't been downtown, take a trip down there. You'll see some really exciting intersection improvements, new trees that are being planted. We're installing new news racks and benches, park lit along Broadway and many sidewalk repairs to enhance the downtown just in time for the holidays. In addition, we can see some work that's being done along Broadway and El Camino in the same vicinity, along the same vein. Recently, we had a coffee with a cop downtown. The Millbrae Police Bureau set up an awning out in front of Starbucks on Broadway, stayed for a couple of hours. And Detective Young and Sergeant Guyney joined Chief Copeland in greeting almost 50 people who stopped by to chat, talk about what's going on in the community. We're also honoring this month employee in our finance department, Amalia Penya. Amalia's been with the city for 17 years. She's one of our stars in terms of her current role, working with utility billings and payments for the city. Every day, she talks with residents about their service, impacts of the water system, talks with business owners about questions they have on their bills. One of the employees that, many, many employees, but one that we are proud to honor. For the holiday season, I see the Chamber CEO here, and I'm sure she's going to talk about a lot of the things that are going on in the downtown area, so I will leave that. I do know, I'm not sure she's going to talk about the holiday train.
You going to talk about the holiday train? No.
Okay, then I'll take that one. The holiday train from Caltrain will be visiting Millbrae on Sunday, December 4th at 5:15, decorated with 70,000 glittering lights. If you can imagine, that's going to be a sight to see. So please join the holiday train activities in the downtown area. Next, I'd like to let you know that we had a beautiful potluck for the holiday with all the city's employees. Papes Meats helped us sponsor a Thanksgiving lunch yesterday, a little bit early for the season of all the employees that are working this week for the city. And I wanted to mention that because Papes was really good to the employees. They have recently been honored in the San Francisco Magazine as one of the best in the Bay Area. And those of you who haven't tried it, you need to because you'll find out why they receive that honor. We're also conducting team building, working on supervisor training and team building exercises within the Public Works Department. We have brought in someone that's worked all over San Mateo County, Lee Violet, San Bruno employee retiree, and had been with the city of Millbrae in a temporary capacity earlier, probably 2009, 2010. Helped us with the transition of the police department to the county sheriffs. We've invited him back and he's doing team building workshops and supervisor training. We've also completed a project that added heat to the new conference area and the administration wing of the building. We are very pleased to say that there's a number of community groups, and in fact, the school board trustees are using that facility now. One of the things they said is that that area of the building has never had heat in it, so we did extend heat to that area. It's been eight years I've been here and we've never had the ability to heat that wing. This week, everybody is warm and cozy and will probably have fewer sicknesses this winter between all the administrative wing personnel. And then lastly, I wanted to bring the council and the community's attention that wonderful, is it wonderful? Wonderful. The restaurant in town has been honored by four stars in the Bib Gourmand category. Again, one of the honorees receiving one of our local businesses. So join us in congratulating all those. And we have one more. You want to make one addition? Please do. We have one addition to the agenda with our clerk.
Vice Mayor and members of the city council, I wanted to just briefly draw your attention to consent calendar item number seven, where we are making the appointments, the recommendations for the reappointments to the various members of the commissions and committees. And in looking at the Park and Recreation Commission, it was brought to my attention that if we were to reappoint all four members, they would not be an even staggering of terms. So we would have four people whose terms would expire in 2020 and one person whose term would expire in 2019. So in order to have a staggering of terms, one of the terms is going to be not through 2020, it will be through 2019. And we have already spoken with the Park and Recreation Chair to let them know that this, we're making this recommendation this evening. The one member that this will be affect is one of our longer standing members, and that member will be serving a term through 2019, and they are aware of that. We did reach out to that member and they are fine with that recommendation as well. We just wanted to point that out to you this evening. As you consider the consent calendar, that the recommendation would be just to change, excuse me, just to change that one term from 2020 to 2019.
And for the record, that's Commissioner Lynch.
It is. We don't need to, you know, personalize it so much. I hate to use that, but it is for the record. Yes, for the record, it is that one term.
Question.
Councilwoman Lee.
They're four-year terms, right?
Correct. They are four-year terms, but that one would just be reduced by one, so we would have three members terming, having to be reappointed, or terms expiring in 2020, and then two in 2019, so you'd have a two-three stagger.
Do we need to, do we need to take a vote on that separately? We just, or you just agree to it, Mike?
Not yet.
So when, we don't have to pull it out? If we can just agree to it on the consent calendar? Because we're discussing it now.
The motion to approve the consent calendar, you can simply make that.
But we're discussing it now.
Well, because we're correcting the agenda.
I'll pull it off the consent calendar anyway.
Are we?
I am.
Oh, okay. There, there's my answer then.
Okay, and I believe there's also a report from the closed session from November 15th.
Yes, to report on the closed session, there was no reportable action at the closed session of November 15th.
Thank you, Assistant City Attorney. At this time, we will go ahead to public communication. You may have up to three minutes to speak on items not on the agenda, and the comments do not necessarily affect the views of the council or the views of the city of Millbrae. First, we have John Berlier.
Angela.
Hi, I'm John Berlier, and you probably know why I'm here. I've written it out, and I hope I don't run beyond three minutes. I'll try not to. Is Millbrae Red Light Camera Program a speed trap? There are three elements necessary to constitute a California illegal speed trap. They are a posted speed limit, that's speed over a measured distance, an engineering and traffic survey which doesn't justify that speed limit, and the third, the use of radar or any other electronic device. Now, there are those who will tell you that the red light cameras are not speed traps, that the above criteria apply to speeders, so that fairness will exist, that there are parameters to protect drivers from unfair law enforcement. Now, let me see. Was there a posted speed limit where I got my red light camera ticket? Yes. Was there an engineering and traffic survey which justified that speed limit? No. No survey was ever taken. Three, was radar or any other electronic device used to produce my ticket? Yes. Ergo, speed trap. It's plain, simple English. It should not be open to interpretation by law enforcement to suit their definition. Without an engineering and traffic survey, Millbrae has been running a speed trap for 10 years. It seems that the writers of the speed trap law spent too much time with their noses too close to the paper. They became outsiders to their own work, meaning for it to address only speeders and not to be inclusive of red light camera violators. However, when you read what's actually on the page, the criteria encompasses red light cameras, too. And the attitude of, well, what I really meant to say was, doesn't fly, and it never did. In the neural anatomy of reading, this is called the ventral route. The second reading pathway is known as a dorsal system. It's turned on whenever you're forced to read, to play, to pay conscious attention to what's actually on the page. And you read as an outsider, not as the author. Are we to be held what's on the page or to what you're telling us what it says? Where does it say, except for red light cameras? Do I have time left over? I guess I do, sent you. I don't see any red, okay. Yesterday's paper said that you're projecting 20,000, sorry, Jim Lester is projecting 20,000 tickets by the end of the year. And 20,000 tickets to approximately 500 bucks. Have you multiplied that out? That's $10 million. Does it really cost that to run the red light camera system? There's a quote here from one of your members that's saying that's, we can't make any money off the red light cameras. We just make enough money to pay back the contractors. Is that really true?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have, looks like three members of the public would like to speak on the holiday tree lighting. Would you like to speak together or separately? Together? Yeah, we have Debbie Van Wart, Catherine Quigg, and Lorian Richardson.
Thank you, Ruben. Good evening, council members. I'm Lorian Richardson, President and CEO of the Millbrae Chamber of Commerce. And the Chamber and the city of Millbrae would like to invite everyone to the 25th Annual Holiday Tree Lighting Celebration. It's on Saturday, December 3rd, in front of Millbrae City Hall. It's at 5:00 PM. It's free to attend, so bring your family, bring your friends and neighbors, tell everyone about it. We'll have some holiday songs, we'll be counting down as the tree is lit. We're going to have hot chocolate and cookies after the program, and I hear that Santa may stop by, so, you know, shh, don't tell the kids, but have that on good authority. So it's really a really fun event. It does not take a lot of time. You'll be in and out in under an hour. And we'll also be collecting for the fire department's toy drive, so if you can, please bring a new unwrapped toy with you to the event. The firefighters, Central County Fire Department would really appreciate it. It's always difficult for them to get enough toys for all the boys and girls in need in this holiday season, and there are a lot of county families that can use those toys, so we'd appreciate that. And also wanted to mention, as the city manager said, there are a lot of wonderful improvements to downtown Millbrae just in time for the holiday season. So we really hope you'll think of our downtown merchants when you go out to do your holiday shopping. They really do depend on your business this holiday season. It sustains them for a lot of their year, actually, in retail, so, and the tax dollars do help all of us. Thank you. And we're going to talk a little about the Holiday Stars program that is in conjunction with the tree lighting.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Van Wart, Vice President of the Millbrae Community Foundation. And Kathy is here with me, too, to help represent the Millbrae Community Foundation. We'd like to invite you, each of you, to, oh, gosh, I'd like to invite you and all of our community members to make a donation to the Millbrae Community Foundation in order for us to create a personalized, hand-painted star that can later be hung on the holiday tree. You can memorialize a family member on the star, or a pet, or whatever you would like. And we have artists just waiting to create your star. We, and your donation can be designated to either rebuilding the Millbrae Community Foundation, excuse me, Millbrae Community Center. We do have a fund specifically for that rebuilding effort. Or you can not designate it, and it will go to our general fund to support the many grants that we receive throughout the year. I'd like to, do you, did I forget anything in your mind?
No. Debbie, you did a great job. We have been promoting this holiday star for the holiday tree at City Hall now for several years. And thanks to Debbie and other members of the community, it has grown, so we have lots of stars for our painters to paint personalized stars. But what you have to do is send a donation soon to millbreyfoundation.org. If you want to do PayPal, it works. Or if you want to send a check to the post office box, PO Box 1612, Millbrae, and we'll get it on the holiday tree, hopefully in time, if you get your money in, for the tree lighting, so they'll all be hung up. Yeah. How much? You know what? It's, it's, it's a foundation, so it's a donation, and we, as much as you want to give us. We really don't like to do it for less than $25 a star, but if you really want it personalized, really, really cute, up. So we get mostly $100 a star, so that's what keeps us going and allows us to fund all the grants that are requested from us. So see you next week, no, two weeks, one week, on the 3rd.
And that website again?
Millbreyfoundation.org.
Hey, sending money now.
Okay, yeah, you can just PayPal it in, and it makes it real simple. Question?
I, I...
Thank you for your donation.
You're welcome. I don't know if I got enough for a star, though. A sign appeared on my front lawn, which is great. Do you need other people to help putting, put out advertisement signs?
You know what? We've put out our last sign today, and we are going to get more signs for next year because we had so many people that said, oh, I'll put one up, one, I'll put one up. And we've run out this year. So next year, we'll have to order more.
Well, I was very happy that it appeared on my lawn. We have a busy street. Hopefully, it's helping.
I thought he checked it out with you.
I'm going to put it on the board.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kathy, Debbie, and Lorian, and look forward to seeing you at the tree lighting ceremony on December 3rd, correct?
Yes.
Saturday evening. Thank you. Next, we have the consent calendar. We have three items on consent calendar, and I believe Councilwoman Schneider.
Yes, I'd like to pull Agenda Item 6 and 7 off Consent Calendar.
6 and 7?
6 and, 6 and 7.
So we now have Consent Calendar of only Item 5, which is an ordinance amending the Millbrae Municipal Code Regarding Littering and Dumping of Garbage. Do we have a motion? We have a second?
Oh, I'm sorry. There's a second. I will use the right issue.
Can you clear the board? Clear the board and do it again. Try again.
Your votes, please.
So our display board is not functioning correctly. I'll take a roll call vote. Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider.
Aye.
Councilmember Papin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Oliver.
Aye.
The motion passes for Consent Calendar, Item Number 5, amending the ordinance, adopting the ordinance, amending Section 6.1, 0.15.020 regarding littering and dumping of garbage.
Okay, Item 6, Councilwoman Schneider.
Okay. The staff memo says that the contract with the public relations firm is for 37,500. The agreement says $35,000. And I couldn't see where another 25 was supposed to be somewhere.
I can answer that question for you. The amount that's in the report, the 37,500, is the correct amount. In the attachment that was sent out, it had the incorrect amount that was caught by the city attorney's office and brought to my attention. So the amount that we are asking is what is in the report as provided to the council this evening.
So the two pages of the agreement that mention $35,000 really should be, read 37,500?
Yes, that is correct.
That was my first question. The second question is, it looks to me like this contract was led under the powers of the city manager and didn't come before city council, and this is now the second contract. And I don't know what the total amount we would be paying in this fiscal year is. So, you know, what was, what have we already paid that we're now adding 37,500?
So, under the background area and the first sent, the first sentence, it says that we contracted in the amount of 31,500. So that was for the June to December period, for right now. So if we were to approve tonight, it would be about 30, excuse me, 69, 68,000. No, 69... No, 69,000. It would be a total of 69,000 for the year. So we needed to bring this six-month agreement before council for approval.
Okay. I actually like this company, and I like the job that they've been doing. But it is my firm opinion that we cannot keep contracting things out. In addition, this company is from Sacramento. So when you read through it, and I think they're doing a good job trying to figure out what's going on here, but they're not from here. And again, we just can't keep doing this. My other question is, was this a sole source contract initially? Did we, because it was done under the city manager's power, and maybe it's still my own inexperience, do we tend to always go out and get three or four bids in the beginning? Or do we sole source it? How do we do that to make sure that there's competition in this?
With response, well, with respect to this agreement here, we have had, we previously had someone else doing our city communication. And that was on a different agreement that we had. And when we needed to change in order to meet the continuing needs of the city and the city council to provide the service that we wanted for the communications piece and the outreach, the communication outreach services that we requested, it was brought to my attention that this firm, through a lot of my city clerk meetings and other meetings, has done very well in communications and representing other clients and other firms. We have also reached out through Trepeby Smith when we have done other work with communications in terms of just gathering information. So they are a very responsive firm. We did the original six-month agreement, going into it and seeing how the service would be with them. And we have been very, very happy with the service that they have been providing.
And I understand that, and I can appreciate that. But what are our, explain to me then the city's rules on competitive bidding for contracts. Because if we keep bringing people in under the amount that has to come before city council, and then we add to it, we've, to me, it seems like we've removed a process in ensuring that we're spending the public's money well.
So this firm, I'm going to assist the city clerk here. This firm was brought in to help us, to assist the city staff with communications about the time the community center fire occurred. We could see that after the initial period, we needed to renew their contract. We have not bid these services, and if that's the desire of the council, we'd be happy to do so.
With everything on our plate, I'm not saying that I'm going to push for going out to bid at this point in time. But you're really putting my, you're putting me up against a rock, and I don't like that. I mean, the governments have processes to go out to bid for the express purpose that we spend the public's money in the best possible manner. You know, unless the other council members really want to go out to bid, that's not what I'm advocating for. But this makes it very difficult if we extend another contract for them into the next fiscal year. It just can't keep going like this. Sole source contracts, to me, are very problematic. And going underneath an amount to avoid it and then coming back is, I don't want to be pointing anything, I just would like it to be a much cleaner process than this. And in the future, I will not allow another extension of this contract. I won't. I won't vote for it, but I'm often at the losing end, but I will not vote for it. The last couple of other questions. Staff has always written a biannual report, and now, according to the scope of services for this contractor, they're going to be interviewing staff and writing the articles. So if we already had staff writing articles, why do we need a public relations firm to now write the articles?
Well, I can clarify that point also. In the past, when we did, and I'm assuming we're talking about a newsletter here.
Yeah, the biannual newsletter.
So the newsletters, even when, in previous years, before this communications firm came on, when we had our newsletter, we had contracted with someone who would assist in the preparation of that newsletter. And part of those services were to prepare the news article. So there's nothing different here. The process hasn't changed. We've always had someone assisting. The staff role is to make sure that we would be on the timeline, to review everything that came through, to make sure that everything was pertinent and on task and on time, and to get the newsletter out. But the component of actually composing all of the newsletter items was up to the person we would contract with. Once they received their marching orders from staff saying, these are the stories we'd like, this is who you'd need to speak with, please get these together and create these articles for us.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Pappen?
I'm going to disagree with Councilwoman Schneider here, and I think it's quite inappropriate to say this was done completely to avoid the competitive process. You said it was done to avoid the competitive process. Okay, it was not done for that purpose. I appreciate council finding a, an organization that has performed well and that we are continuing that, bringing it before the council. I think that's a good thing. We were put in quite a pinch with the tragedy that happened at the recreation center. So I'm going to be voting for this. And thank you to the council, to the staff.
Councilwoman Lee?
I have a question, didn't I have a comment? But my question for Councilwoman Snyder is, I'm kind of at lost, what is, what cannot be, continue to go on? What do you mean by that?
Starting a contract below the amount that would trigger having to go out to bid. So whatever the amount is that Millbrae has, it requires to go out to bid for a dollar amount. So when you start a contract under that, but then add to it over time, at one, at some point, you've hit that amount that would have required going out to bid. I believe the amount's 50,000. It used to, sometimes cities were 25, it might be 35, it might be 50. But at some point, that dollar amount is supposed to tell the public that we will go out for a public process and a public vetting of multiple vendors.
Is this within our budget, city manager?
Yes.
Okay. City manager, we voted to give the city manager what type of spending, spending authorization?
This council, per se, has not taken action. Prior councils have authorized, I believe it's in the municipal code, I'd have to check the citation. But I do have authority within the budget limitations approved by the council, up to $50,000 per project.
So you're just giving us...
Or per issue.
So basically, you're giving the council the opportunity to weigh in on these contracts. And I have to also point out that going out to bid for a contract of this size would really up the cost another third, at least. So there's a cost benefit analysis that needs to be, that was probably done. I'm pretty sure it was done. We have contracts all the time on a need basis. When we had the water main breaks, when I was mayor the third day, thank you, Mayor Pappen, we had the opportunity to bring on contractors without having to bid on emergency basis. I know this is not an emergency, but I believe one of the, one of the, one of the things that Councilwoman Snyder has always really important to you is transparency. And this is our way, and the city's been criticized for not being transparent. And I think to try to have a communication experts put out the communications that needs to go out there, that we don't have expertise in, and we don't have the time. And their staff, our staff is already pretty much stretched to the limit, because we don't have that much staff. And these people bring expertise immediately to provide the transparency that this council has valued. So I'm in favor of this. I don't think it's, I don't think staff is trying to be elusive or trying to do anything that's inappropriate. I think that she's, our city manager and staff are trying to include the city council because she has a $50,000 authorization, and she's not going to use it. She wants us to all weigh in on it.
Any additional comments?
No. First of all, I have no problems with the company, and in fact, have complimented them on getting things on Nextdoor. Facebook, I don't use. But Nextdoor, they have been putting things out. That's a function of transparency. Transparency in contracts is a subject for a different time, but I wouldn't consider that this, well, tonight is a function of transparency, but not what's happened in the past. So you and I can agree to disagree on that. And I didn't say I wasn't voting for this. But in the future, I would love to see more competitive bidding for contracts that we're going to have for a long time.
Oh, a quick question. Do we have a policy regarding what specific amount has to be bid? A small contract like this?
The procurement of services does not require necessarily a competitive process. So whether it's below or above the city manager's authority, the city has the ability to go out. Obviously, as you get to larger amounts, it's more efficient to, and you know, you can get, you know, it is more of a justification for spending the time to do the bidding. But the city manager has up to $50,000. That enables her to contract for services in smaller amounts. But certainly, once that number gets above 50,000, the council needs to play a role. That is the delegated authority you have provided to her, so.
Which is fine. Okay. Yeah, no, I agree with Councilmember Lee. For such small projects, this is just not efficient to open it up like this. And I thank you for bringing it to our attention. We appreciate it, and we look forward to these services.
Okay. Looks like we have a motion from Councilwoman Pappen, and a second from Councilwoman Lee. Create your votes, please.
The motion to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Trepeby Smith for communication services for the City of Millbrae is, passes.
Okay, thank you. Next is Item Number 7, Appointments to City Commissions and Committees. Councilwoman Schneider?
I just want to thank all of our existing committee and commissioners for continuing to serve. I have a problem, and it's not actually something on tonight's agenda, is how well are we going to enforce absentees? Because I have been sitting in at planning commission meetings because they're not televised. So I sit in the back so that I can listen. And we have a fairly consistent set of absentees, and I'm very concerned, it's not going to affect tonight's vote, but I'm concerned on how we are going to monitor absentees. There's, every committee and commission is doing critical work, and we need everybody to show up. And I'm just mentioning that now to put it on the record. But I'd love to hear how we're going to monitor, especially planning and park and rec, with absentees.
That's a good point. That's something that I have brought up several times in the past. You know, I do appreciate the service of all these commissioners, and they should be reappointed. However, I think for the sake of the council and knowing, you know, who we are appointing and reappointing, I would request that as well. I know we do take minutes at every meeting, and we do know who's there and not there. So maybe just some type of, like, a spreadsheet or something with a list of commissioners and for each commission, and, you know, meeting number one, present or absent, meeting two, present, just some type of a quick reference for us to have, just to make sure that we know that these people are attending, because otherwise, we don't have that information. Councilman Lee?
Thank you. I agree with that. We, in the beginning, the subcommittee, and I think we talked about this in council meeting, the fact that each committee or commission has a policy they put together, like a procedure, policy and procedures, they put together. I know that when I was on the planning commission, we did that, and we looked at it every year. And one of those, one of those items, or actually, the whole section of the item is about attending meetings and not, and the definition of how many meetings you have to go. And if you miss so many meetings in a certain span of time, then you're, you may be considered off the commission or whatever. But I think, I think that this, I just, point of clarification, that this committee or this council would have to say that this person is not meeting their obligations and can be removed.
So one of the things you need to consider, first of all, we do have the privilege of having Deborah Nelson, who worked on the committing commissions revisions to your rules, with us this evening. Perhaps she can recall without any prep time and address this. But one of the things we can do is provide the information. Over the last quarter, at the beginning of the year, we'll be happy to bring forward a report from the city clerk's office. One of the things the council needs to address itself to, then, is what do you want to do with that type of information? So it's one thing to keep the records, it's another to consider the council's policy or a review of those items. So Deborah, when we did the revisions, is this an issue that came up, and where are we with any direction on that? Or would that be something we'd need to bring back?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. In each resolution and ordinance, the ordinance for the commissions, the resolutions for committees, you did adopt language regarding absenteeism. And it is, I don't have it before me, but I believe it's 90, depending on how often they meet, three consecutive meetings over a period of 90 days. There's also language which each committee and commission will adopt. Their bylaws, and you adopted a template for that. I believe we have in there language regarding attendance as well. If you wanted us to, as staff, direct staff to make sure that there's a reporting, we could put that in the bylaws as each committee and commission adopts it. In the past, you have relied on the chair and the committee and commission peers to let council liaisons. And I don't know, in the case of the planning commission, because you don't have a liaison, but you do have an appointing subcommittee, how they inform you that there is absenteeism.
Yeah, it's, it's... Planning commission is public record.
All of the...
Correct.
They all are.
Yeah. And so, you know, the minutes reflect how, who attends and who doesn't. And this is not part of the agenda this evening. We did cover this.
Yeah, you know, we do have a subcommittee that reviews all of the appointments to committees and commissions. And I think it would be valuable, you know, before that subcommittee makes the recommendation, to at least have, you know, some type of record that shows how frequent this commissioner was present or absent, and therefore can use that information to better inform the recommendation. Okay, looks like we have a motion. We have a second? Okay. Okay. We have, clear the board?
I'll fix that.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, which one do you use now? Oh, sorry, it wasn't straight.
Okay.
That's fine, that's okay, councilman. I appreciate it.
All right. We have a motion from Councilwoman Pappen, and a second from Councilwoman Snyder. Your votes, please.
And that is with the amendment that Commissioner Lynch's term will expire June 30th of 2019.
Well, not necessarily. Okay, we'll leave it.
Well, we need to know which is...
Removing the terms, not necessarily the people's terms that are...
The term...
The two will be a 19, and three will be an 18.
Well, actually, I have a question about that. It says 20, actually. 2020. So shouldn't it be 2018?
No, they're four years.
Yeah, four years.
These are four-year terms.
Offset by two years. So now you have three years, it's offset by one year, because 2000, the other ones are expiring 2020. And you're saying this one person's going to be on 2019. So shouldn't it be 2018?
We have three, we have currently one member, we have currently one member who was not up for reappointment, who would be, his term would expire on 19. And then we were going to just reduce one term so that we would have two members expiring in 2019, and three members expiring in 2020. So we have a total of five.
No, I understand. Oh, no, I'm not questioning the total amount. I'm questioning the overlap.
Is it staggered?
Because the stagger, right now, you have, it won't change for three years for, so normally it's...
Eighteen and twenty.
Yeah, eighteen and twenty.
So do you want to fix the two?
So can we have a change in the motion, or adapt the motion? Is that okay?
Changed.
They should change every two. Change every two years.
You agree, could you agree to that motion?
So there is one commissioner whose term currently, who is not up for reappointment tonight, whose term will expire in 2019. Can we change that commissioner's term to expire in 2018, or that, I don't think that would be appropriate at this time?
Not on your agenda. I would suggest that it would need to come back after we look at it and make sure we understand the moves that you're requesting.
So after this motion, we'll have three expiring in 2020, one expiring 2019, and one expiring in 2018.
On that one commission, yes.
On the Parks and Rec Commission.
Okay.
I don't think we can shorten somebody's term who is already there now, we can do it at a later time.
Yeah, let's not even vote on.
I'd like to move to pass everything but that one.
That's one, yeah. Let's just pass the ones that are going to expire in 2020, and not just the one that's not going to.
Okay. So we will, so for Parks and Rec, you would like to approve three out of the four commissioners up for reappointment, everybody from all of the other commissions.
Correct.
And normally.
It's my motion.
I'm just informing you, as a past commissioner, that, you know, people just stay on until they're officially, I mean, when I was a planning commissioner, they didn't kick me off, and they didn't put me back on, so it was kind of like.
They tried.
I know you tried, but it was a Twilight Zone, so really, people just stay on until we kick them off, basically, so that's.
No, now they all have term limits, but we agreed that the term limits would begin now, although if you're two years into a four-year term, I believe you get two additional terms after that, so it doesn't provide a lot of opportunity for new voices.
Yeah, so that's why it needs to stagger two years, so.
There's a motion pending.
Yeah, okay, let's vote.
Clarify the motion.
Clarify the motion, please.
Point three of the terms listed on your agenda under Park and Rec.
Yes.
And all other.
The remainder, the remaining.
You'll come back for the other ones, thank you.
On economic vitality, I don't remember offhand the size of that commission.
Nine.
Nine, okay.
Okay, so I think as part of the, you know, well, okay, we'll have the vote now, but I think going forward, we will look to adjust all of the terms, and probably not just for Parks and Rec, but for other commissions too, to be on a every-two, every-two-years staggered cycle, so we don't have, you know, a three-year gap between reappointments, and.
Do you want to just pull the item?
No, we do have several commissioners we need to reappoint that need, yeah.
I have a motion pending.
Okay.
Please.
Your votes, please.
We'll take, we'll take a roll call vote, I'm sorry, it's not cooperating. So Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Schneider?
Aye.
Councilmember Pappin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Oliver?
Aye.
The motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Now we will go to existing business, business item number eight, the general plan update presentation. Ms. Nelson.
What they're saying is they want the terms separated by two years, so you need to look at them all and see where you are. I'm going to help her.
Well, look at that fancy font. Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. I'm here tonight to. Is that all right? I know, that's very odd, so I just point this.
There it goes.
That one, okay. Here to report on the community workshops, which were held between November 1st and November 7th, and I'll do a visual presentation, but tonight, I'd like you, as a council, to receive the presentation, and you can provide any additional input at this milestone in the general plan. And also, I believe that there are some comments that you may have as individuals on the existing conditions report, which was released several months ago, and we're still anxious to receive those. If you have comments, you can get them to the Community Development Department, and we'll be sure to pass them along to the consulting team. So the event was held in the Jacuti Room, and at 439 Broadway, we were lucky to negotiate with a wonderful property owner who was very generous in allowing us to use her space. The Parks Department created a temporary parquet in front of the space, and there were lots and lots of visitors dropping by, walking the street, curious about what was going on, and an opportunity for folks to comment. We advertised before the event with 11,000 postcard mailers to the community, and a walk-by on Broadway and all the downtown side streets, and El Camino Real, a personal visit to every business advertising the event. There was a banner installed across Broadway, there were email blasts to everybody who signed up for the general plan. It was on the city's calendar and Facebook page, and all print pieces were produced in English and Chinese language, and interpretive services were provided on a morning tour and at every evening event. Where we are in the general plan process is represented in this arrow, and we are, we just finished the community workshops, and now the team will take back all of that input, and you will see in early winter, the opportunity to start looking at alternatives that come out of the community input for the general plan, and specifically, the El Camino Real and downtown. The specific plan area is the El Camino and the downtown, and it is also connected to the Millbrae Station area specific plan. That specific plan is a capital S. It involved the landowners, there are lots of funding mechanisms associated with it. The specific plan for the El Camino and Broadway are more a small s, in that although we, we have done lots of outreach and talked to the businesses, there is not a financial participation, nor are there specific development proposals associated with that. So this is a visioning of what could happen in, in your economic core. On the, the general plan team, in the last year that they've been working, they created this site characteristics diagram, very architectural, as you'll see, but defining, this is a transit corridor, and defining sort of land uses and the ways in which connectivity between sides of the community work or don't work well, including a safety diagram, and the red areas show those places where it's fairly difficult to get around, particularly if you're a pedestrian or a bicyclist. They also looked at vacant and underutilized parcels, and you'll see in the specific area plan, they show those, even those that has a plan, because they're not yet developed. And it is a consideration that general plan and plan development area specific plan will certainly include what has been approved by you for the Millbrae Station area specific They also looked at market conditions, and there is, there are gaps in retail sales. They've determined that the economic portion of the team, that there is ability for another 165,000 square feet of retail and future growth, might be yet again another 185,000 square feet of retail. They also looked at office, and Millbrae lacks Class 1 office space, at least until the specific plan area begins to develop. Hotel revenues have continued to grow, and there is not a very high residential vacancy rate, so that usually means that there is room for more residential when you don't have a very high vacancy rate. They also presented the data regarding fiscal impacts of land uses, residential, there still are in the positive for cities, but they're almost break even, retail slightly more. Hotel, particularly in this community, brings a lot of revenue, and office also is quite strong. The development value per acre for ownerships also shows offices very strong.
What is that?
Pardon me?
Explain further this development value.
Yes, so per acre of, the, per acre of development, say, of office, there is, in the millions of dollars, up almost 160 million per acre, whereas for retail, it is considerably less. So although there is room for retail, because there is demand and there's leakage to other communities, if you are strictly looking at what would be best for the community in terms of the value of land use, you might go all office, but there is certainly awaiting people, it is a residential community, and there are services needed, so also, its proximity to the airport makes the demand for hotels, but there is, they did determine there is a loss, there's a lot more room for Class A office in Millbrae, at least there's demand for Class A office. And so this data was presented at all the community meetings for folks to then, and I'll show you visually what the folks did at these various meetings with this, this information, and looking at kinds of land uses and the vacant land and.
So maybe, maybe people are thinking 80% or 90% don't want to travel outside the city for work.
Well, that would be.
That currently.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So then, we, we talked a lot, there's a, if you remember Jim Hyde, the part of the team that's very skilled at downtowns, and there was a presentation about particularly business improvement districts, divided into six major factors of creating a business improvement district, and you just, you just approved one of those, which is the clean and safe, and that is, the first thing that happens in business improvement districts is make it a place where people feel safe to come there, and it's clean to look at, and they like being in the space. The second is what's called tactical urbanism, where we hope to get one of these quite soon, and that would be a parquet in front of Nine Hillcrest, and other kinds of things that landowners can do. Then events and programs, certainly the chamber tonight talked to you about events and programs, and the library talked to you about events and programs. There is lots of opportunity for lots of collaboration between business organizations and the community to enliven the downtown, and part of that is its proximity to the Civic Center, which is really quite valuable. Then incubating new uses is to go out and kind of look for what those will be, and trying to bring them here. Filling the gaps is an effort to seek out, creating a there-there in the downtown. So one thing that we might look at is closing off a street one weekend a month or something, and then creating an event. And then lastly, upgrading the hardware, although we've also reported on that tonight, it certainly spurs interest for us to do new, new hardware in the downtown, benches and trees and lighting fixtures. So they also presented the timeline, which some of these things for a BID get implemented, and you can see it's a process, and we've started that. We had a lot of interest in the various meetings for the general plan. This is a picture of the workshop site at 439 Broadway, and there were these idea boards out in front, and there was staff always of the consulting team or city staff, always there to meet people, to ask them to write their comments down, to come in, to talk to all of the folks that were, they actually were rolled up their sleeves with plans and were working inside, and the consulting team took any time that anybody wanted to talk to them. The schedule over the time was Tuesday, November 1st, in the Jacuti Room, pretty much what I presented in all of that background was presented to the community, and then an invitation to participate in the following events. Wednesday was a walking tour, and I'll have some visuals of that, and then a visioning session. Thursday was a hands-on working session on alternatives, but again, that's when the public could walk in, and there were lots of them. Friday was a working session also, and we had three of the city's committees participate in those formally as a group, and those three committees all have within their work plans, participation in the general plan. As does Park and Recreation Commission, which will look at the bike and transportation plan later. The Planning Commission also participated in the last night, November 7th, which was the wrap-up. And we will also look for other opportunities, youth participated early on last year, we'll look for other opportunities for other committees and commissions to participate as well. The walking tour, this is the area in red, and the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 is the, is the direction that we covered. There were three groups of 10 to 12 of us, there was a staff member with each group to answer questions as they came up, and there was a member of the consulting design team who talked with them, with all the participants, they had clipboards and maps, and they could write things and ask questions. What are the places that contribute to a positive walking experience and why? Which locations are problems for connecting and crossing the street? And everybody could have horror stories about trying to cross El Camino. And where are there opportunities for streetscape improvements and new development for, or public spaces? And regarding streetscape improvements, I've shortened this presentation, but it is online, and MCTV has, I think, is running it. There are lots of visuals about what the El Camino might become, including areas for people to have refuge in the middle, and bump outs at corners, and those kinds of things. Here's some of the participants, and the walking tour feedback was regarding the, as I mentioned, what successful places and what contributes to them, what places are safe, and where are their opportunity sites. So we walked by some of these large parking lots that appear to be vacant, and where my more intense uses go. The visioning session happened Wednesday night, and these images on the wall behind the team at this one table was, eventually, by the end of the evening, there were red dots or green dots, or a combination of both, on these illustrations of kinds of uses in other communities, or even in our own community, about what people liked or didn't like, and wanted to see more of or less of. It was a visual preference survey, and they had a series of questions on this to spur people's conversation. The feedback for the visioning session workplace regarding transportation was that, that parking is balanced with the growth, and there was some input to support a parking district in the downtown. There was input that we should design for all ages from 8 to 80 to get around, bikes, walking, that there be a more spacious pedestrian environment on Broadway, and lots of conversation about going to parallel parking rather than angle parking, so that the sidewalks could be made wider. Shuttle and feeder transit crossings at El Camino, direct and safe access to BART, a transit-only lane on El Camino, and improved bikeways and bike parking. Regarding land use, people said they'd like an expanded restaurant choice, a healthier mix of shopping. Bowling alleys and movie theaters and bocce ball and all kinds of things, including cultural amenities, performing arts, community theater, music pop-ups, music came up a lot. And then more hotels, office space in the downtown. Sorry, I gotta go back. Regarding public spaces, there was input for a public plaza in the downtown, a consistent tree canopy, more sidewalk cafes, public art. In fact, there was, I'll show you on the next slide, little dots for places for public art. And then programmatic, closing off Broadway, a night market, pop-up music, events, block parties, a bike share, outdoor checkers and chess, those kinds of things. So then, on Thursday in the evening, there was, this is a visual of a table, there were six of these tables with a full-size map of the, of the planned development area in the downtown. And these little, these are game pieces that represent various densities of residential or park or parking. They had some wildcard things, they had hotels, they had places to, some of these lineal ones that you see are suggestions for streetscape or bikeways. And so there were six of these created. And then at the final evening, which was November 7th, the Monday night, the consulting team actually summarized the six down into two that represented sort of the extremes of them. This one had most of the residential and commercial up near the BART station, then lots of community activity and retail in and around this more east-west corridor that represents the Civic Center. And then drifting off into north, there was lots of input around the north part of town and that there might be more retail and residential there. The second concept, still entertainment in and around the Civic Center and the larger parcels east-west, but most of the residential in the north and most of office and infill kinds of retail more towards the Millbrae specific plan. And then lastly, on frame, on parking, we noted that most of the parking is in and around the Civic Center in the downtown and looking at those connections and how we can get people to park where the parking is rather than wanting to be right in front of a store and do a, do more parking management, identify how much is needed. So the, the next steps are, the team will take away all of this great information and will be doing some analysis over the next few months. And we will be looking, they'll bring back several alternatives to look at and upon which the EIR and the general plan would be written. And that would be in winter and it would come before the Planning Commission, it would become, come before the council and there'll be an additional community workshop. So that, if you'd like to see more, it's on the website too. But that concludes my presentation. I, I, I was really pleasantly surprised, as was the consulting team. They said to me they've always wanted a storefront location and never been able to secure one. And so having it right in the downtown where people could point to what it is they like and don't like. And also, all the activities, particularly from, from deans, people started coming in at 7:30 in the morning and it was, so we had lots and lots and lots of comment. It was quite successful.
You're good. Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
Questions? Councilwoman Peppin?
Yeah, I have to say that was, I popped in at the very end of one, one night and faces I'd never seen before. It was great. The place was packed and just as they were wrapping things up, very, very impressive. Public art, you mentioned.
Yes.
I'm just gonna state here, we, I don't believe have anything in our general plan at this point or our, I guess, code regarding contributions to public art or developments contributing to public art. I'm not quite sure how that works. I know the City of San Mateo has some construction going on and when it reaches a certain financial amount, then the developer has to contribute some sort of public art. So you will see in the City of San Mateo now at Third Avenue, two buildings going up on one corner.
Yeah.
And there's a little man up on a ledge.
I saw that today, yeah, sitting up there.
Who will be looking at the clock on the other building. And that's the public art. I mean, it's sweet. It's very nice, but, and evidently this developer is doing it even though they don't meet the public art level of development. So I think it would be helpful for the, our council, if ever in the future, we are talking about major developments, that we actually make that a part of making our, I don't know how, when we go about this. I'd be curious to find out how the City of San Mateo has incorporated that into their developments or general plan because I think that would be a good addition to the City of Millbrae?
I believe that...
Do you know anything about that?
Yes. And I, having worked in a couple of communities with that, there are a couple of ways that can happen. Certainly, just based on the public input and everything that we have heard from the council, there is an interest in public art. And whether it be through a development agreement with a developer and it's part of the community benefit, or you adopt a arts, a percent for arts fee with development. And that would be, so it would be in the general plan that there's an interest in public art and then there would be recommendations for how you implement that.
I would be very interested in exploring that further. I think that would be quite interesting. We have very limited public art and I, again, having been part of the last policy we developed, we understand that art is kind of personal for people, so you don't want just any art coming up. But I think it would greatly enhance our community. So I think that would be quite interesting if we could get more information on what's some...
Also, I, I worked in a community where there was an arts, it came from the, from the community where they created a program that the city's expense was basically just to do the foundations to receive sculpture. And that sculpture would be in place for a couple of years. Sometimes a benefactor would buy it and it permanently stayed in the community. Sometimes it would rotate back out, but, so there, there can be program. I think Lake Oswego, Oregon does the same kind of thing. So there can be programs that are developed with some expense on the city's part, but also the developers do it or you have a very strong community group that does these kinds of programs and creates the process to jury them and all that sort of thing.
And, you know, along those lines, if the public is interested, as they've shown here, I think it would be a good idea. I understand the mayor of San Francisco has a whole, like, storage area of public art that's been given to San Francisco, even if we get some on loan once in a while. It could be nice. He's just, I guess they get a lot of gifts there. But it's opportunity that I think could really enhance the community. And Deborah, thank you for your work on all of this. This is kind of exciting as we're approaching this. I have one quick question for the city staff. I noticed the recycling station moved back to its old location. What happened?
At this point, the report I got today left a lot of unanswered questions, so I'm not going to give details until we have the whole story put together. But I understand at the direction of the owners of the shopping center, it was moved back. We have a report coming from city staff as to what the rules are and what the requirements are. And we should have that for you by the next time you meet. But we did see that too. We've inquired. We don't have the full answers yet.
So it sounds like that if anybody likes it at the new location, back away from El Camino, maybe just write the property owner at this point. Thank you.
Are there questions or comments? Councilwoman Schneider?
I attended every session and I think they did an amazing job. And one of the, a couple of things I'd like to see that I'm not sure and maybe they're in progress, the walking tour was a real eye-opener. So the group that I was in, everybody was like, wow, we'd never done this before. We'd never walked into the specific area. We'd never been on Sarah. So when I talked to the team, they were going to put the map on Millbrae 2040 website so that people could go and do their own walking tour. It's not going to be quite the same. One of the eye-openers for us, my team, we walked from Pape's Meat Market, no, we walked down that block, whatever 100 block that is, out to El Camino. And how noisy it is until you get to the next block where there's a different set of, of plants and that green railing and how much quieter, just the difference in plants could be from the noise coming up and down El Camino Real. So the walking tour was, and then they walked on the other side of El Camino, which many people have never done. And they see how congested the sidewalk feels or how scary if they've never crossed the street. So if we could, in a safe way, do that and encourage people to go for a walk, it was, it was really a fantastic experience on that. And I found public art that I didn't know we had. It may not have been something that we would have recognized, but the Bellamore, which I've been in and out of, but I never walked the portion of the building that had a fountain. So who knew that we've got, and this lovely little seating area. So I think it's a great opportunity for people to see some charming things that we do have on that. I have one concern on the chart that's called sites character diagram. And it shows how people cut through Millbrae to get to El Camino. So these are basically the streets that are perpendicular. And it shows Meadow Glen leading to Helen and it shows Hillcrest and Millbrae Avenue. But in reality, they also cut up and down Richmond and then they cut quickly through Ashton, the other streets, but Ashland, Palm and Poplar. And when we get to the active transportation portion of this, it isn't just those dangerous areas down on El Camino Real, but it's those of us who live on the, the perpendicular feeder streets that are just crazy. And I brought that up at least one of the meetings. I'd love to see that particular diagram reflect that people cut through that neighborhood, but there may be other neighborhoods in town that they cut through. It may be South Ashton in, on the, our Burlingame side that they cut through, but that we reflect, especially for active transportation, all of the neighborhoods that get affected by Crestview is another street that doesn't show in this specific plan, but it should be part of the active transportation plan. I was really amazed at sort of the openness to doing a BID. I sat in and listened to a couple of the cult, community groups or committee, commissions, and they were pretty open to it. I talked to the consultants afterwards because I didn't know if the existing contract amount, the dollar amount for the general plan or the dollar amount for the planned development area included money that would actually check what I think has to be done, which is the number of landowners times the square footage and who is eligible to vote or not, to see how, how we could actually do that. And I, my understanding is it's not part of the contract, but it's something that I would be open to considering, I know for all my talk about contractors, of actually adding money to get that research done as, as a public-private partnership. The meetings that I went to, it was very much public-private partnership on this. And just a real open experience with it. I did ask, did cultural arts get invited to any of the meetings? I saw one member of the cultural arts committee there.
Everybody was invited, I mean, the whole city.
Yeah, everyone in the community...
The three committees were specifically given time on Friday. Cultural arts wasn't. I asked if there had, was there any way to try to bring them in?
Well, yes, there will be because we'll have more opportunity. And I'm thinking during the alternatives discussion where what's presented is where the folk, where people who were with it thought there could be art, we will, we will bring them in. I did not, I only brought in those committees that had the general plan as one of their work program items. So there were just three at that point, seniors, economic vitality and the community enhancement. But we are going to bring everybody in at several or at least one point in the process.
Okay.
And then can I respond to the BID thing just for a minute? Yeah, I was pleasantly surprised too. And that's the, the kind of conversation that needed to happen. We have had BID in, in the budget for a number of years and it's very hard to have a conversation with the property owners if there is not a vision for what could happen. So this is like the beginning of that. There is a budget in the CIP for, it's either $40,000 or $50,000. It has not yet been spent because there's a certain amount of readiness. So I, I think that by spring, we could be ready to, to talk about how that BID could get formed and start that as a separate item.
Not necessarily with this consultant.
Right. We would go...
Yes.
It was one of the trainings I went to at the League of California Cities, talked about how to form and how the various voting structures. So I'm curious to see how that'll go. The other thing that I, I really appreciate the consultants were, I had mentioned to them that we have these two small business streets, Park and Park, and they've already got wide sidewalks, but they feel, when I talk to the merchants there, they feel neglected by the city. And the consultants walked up there and looked at it and they were brought into the process. They were in the map anyway, but they really brought into the process. And I think if we could give a little love to that end of the city, we have some really exciting opportunities because the sidewalks are already wide. And we just need a different mix of businesses in there, maybe some youth orientation. So I, I just really appreciate the process. I never thought what could happen in the parking lot between Safeway and/or Office Depot Building, whether it stays or not, the whole new world that could happen right there. And I think that that was absolutely exciting.
Right, right.
Oh, okay. And I'm sorry, one last thing. Since that charrette and even during the charrette, I'm getting a couple of phone calls a day about people screaming about the lack of parking in downtown. And I know that it'll go into the general plan, I know it'll go into the specific plan, but I don't know if there's some kind of short-term planning we can do, whether it involves employees who are parking downtown. Some of these were employees who called and said, I used to be able to park in four-hour parking, they've changed the signs, it's now two hours. I have to leave work four times a day to move my, my car. Which then says, well then, customers can actually get to the location. Given that we've got these two processes and they're going to take considerable time and they need to take that time, can we do something, we didn't have our goal-setting meeting prior to this, to do a short-term brainstorm or, or plan, even if it's just employees, to open up some parking downtown? I know that many times during the week, I just can't get downtown, I can't park or my elderly parents cannot park, so we are not shopping in downtown when we want to. So I really think we need to push this up on our goal-setting, even if it's just a temporary plan. Thank you.
Did you have anything in mind for that? I don't understand.
I do, actually. If, when I talk to merchants and I find out where their, their employees are parking, they're parking in the city public lots or occasionally they're parking on street lots. But we do have parking that may belong to the, the Millbrae Square people. But if we had a program that worked with the merchants to bring the employees to this area, which is basically right here near City Hall, would we have to do a short-term shuttle to bring them in in the morning and the evening? But we could at least experiment with it and see if it opens up some street parking. But if not...
I believe that a lot of the businesses do require their employees to park so that the customers can come in.
Yeah, I...
It's, it's kind of a natural thing already for the city to develop some sort of a shuttle would be, I think, cost prohibitive here. But I think shortening, we have now the parking enforcement officer, which is supposed to be turning spaces around and those kind of things.
And the council will recall, probably 2011, if not 2012, the city did work with the merchants associate, well, the Chamber of Commerce, who worked with all the businesses in the downtown. And they did recommend some of the changes that took place and are still in effect as to two hours, four hours, and which, which block phases those would be. That said, not that it wouldn't be time to revisit that scenario, given the changes in the economy, but, you know, let's not forget that the existing timelines in place were... were at the request of the business community, the property owners through the Chamber of Commerce. How we got where we are is always important.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilman Lee?
Thank you. For the youth engagement, could you maybe have like a mini presentation at the high schools or something, rather than trying to get them to come, go to them
Yeah, actually, we've had some requests to go to visit others, and it occurred to me, having been in these meetings lately, the Interact Club and all these other youth groups that are already in place, we could go visit them. We didn't have the youth advisory committee meeting, because asking them to come out on a Friday would be tough, but they would have gotten invitations to the night meeting. But we can, we can start to do more of our own little road shows. If this one was successful, we could sort of do that.
Yeah, I think if you did it like in a cafe, like T4, or one of those popular cafes the kid likes to go to and offer them, you know, discount on drinks or something, and, you know, normally you're not going to get that many kids, but you get some kids. What was the reaction to the, the parklet demonstration?
Well, I think folks were real curious. I didn't hear complaints that how come you took up four parking spaces?
I have heard that, though.
That, in front of.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm all, I'm all heard about deans and the trucks that come in the morning and, and just as a city planner, having worked in lots of towns the size of Millbrae, I think you're fortunate to have deans. It brings people to the downtown, and Pape's. These are the kinds of uses that lots of communities would just do anything to have in the downtown. And there are inconveniences that come with them, but people come.
I.
I stood in line today for 45 minutes to get my turkey, and I had pre-ordered, so.
I saw a lot of people sit in the parklet. So it seems to me like it was well-used.
Yeah.
And well-populated. So, and they're, I mean, if they were so unpopular, they wouldn't be sprouting all over the city, because they are sprouting the city. And they're taking up really critical, not critical, valuable parking spaces, and people are willing to put up with it. So, I mean, these are Fillmore, Mission District, you know, all over where a lot of restaurants and popular, you know, and, and a lot of restaurants are. So I think that, you know, a little bit of, I think that's a great idea. I also support something for art. If we can put something together that comes, it's not, we're not reinventing the wheel here. I mean, a lot of cities do this. They put some sort of assessment or impact fee for, you know, just as Councilwoman Papin has described. I noticed, again, I just want to reiterate that one of the slides, when we were looking at who are all the stakeholders, Chamber, the city, or club, property owners, but BID was on almost every one of those on Business Improvement District. And I think that our citizens are starting to figure it out, that without the buy-in of the property owners, we're not going to get what the improvements that we want to see in downtown, because they're the ones who control their properties. And without them, we'd just be spending, we'd just be throwing good money after bad, like we have in the past, and not get, you know, the, the improvement in, in business. And that's the whole idea, is to improve our bottom line in the businesses and provide also a place to congregate. And speaking of congregating, I went to the, a couple of events down in Redwood City, and the latest one was a veteran event. And they did this great community gathering place, you know, I think mostly known as this, the, in front of the courthouse, the old courthouse, they transformed the yard. We need something like that. We need some place to congregate, to have these, I mean, in the past, what we did was we closed off, we closed off a corner of the street, or something like that. And I, you know, I would think that we should look at closing off La Cruz. I don't, it's not a really big, big heavily-used street. It's, you know, maybe we should look into that and see how that works for us. I, it's a question about, I've noticed that a lot of new, and a lot of towns have been doing a lot of revitalization by adding the government center closer to the businesses. Can you speak a little bit about that?
I think that the team, and if you look at the one, some of these would, you know, all this purple area in the middle is, is kind of the, well, that's the, sorry, this is more the PUC property, but the, the distance from our community center to the downtown is actually pretty close by some community standards. I don't know that you want to put a community center on your shopping street, because every time there is a wall that doesn't have something to look at or go into, it really makes people.
The dead zone, it's called dead zone, right? No, I'm not talking about government center, I'm not talking about community center, like government services, fire, police.
Yeah, no, they, they, right. They're, they're all right here. But, community gathering, that's certainly the way cities are going. It has become the outdoor living room in communities, because this is where you connect with people. And we did get lots and lots of input about more community spaces, not only uses, but just places to hang out. And ring in the food trucks, put up the tent, close off a street, give us a place, give us a reason to come down here at all times of the day and have some fun.
And thank, thanks again for doing this, and the, thank you staff for, I think this was a very successful charrette and community involvement input. Exactly what we're looking for was a diversity of input. I think I, I peeked in a few times. I didn't make many comments, because I feel I didn't want to, I didn't want to influence the process. I just wanted to observe. And I, I know, I saw that parking is an issue, and I saw that Councilwoman Snyder was very vocal about that as well. So I know that's very passionate to you. And I think parking has been an issue for a while, and we, it's not that the council is not interested in it, but we know, we've already implemented, I think, a parking study, I believe that's on the books to be done. So, and there is a problem with free parking that's not available. So that's like, no free parking. And that needs to be addressed. On a bright note, though, on day of the, one of the day of the charrettes, on a Wednesday night, a lot of people were able to park right in front at six o'clock in the evening. So I don't know, I don't, I think, I would love to have the problem where you couldn't find parking at six o'clock in the evening, because that means our downtown's bustling. But that's not the case yet.
On the same lines, if I might, does anybody do teeny parking spaces?
Pardon me?
Those mini little cars that drive you nuts, because.
What are they?
Little smart cars? Does, has any city done, like, teeny parking spaces?
I haven't, I haven't seen motorcycle. I don't know that I've seen those yet.
They could practically go into a motorcycle parking.
Yeah.
I mean, because there are just some areas where you can't have a full parking space that we may be able to, if we really look closely, find spots for those little, what did you call them? Smart cars.
And I, I would imagine that our, the transportation arm of the team is very up on all of that, and solutions that other communities have found. And we will learn that in the winter, spring, when they come forward with some of their findings.
Be curious.
Yeah.
But let's finish my discussion. I think that a parking study is to figure out to where we need to spend the money to increase parking, or use most parking. Now, here's, here's the other issue, too, is that a while ago, we passed an ordinance to, I think it was, to require that employees with more than 50 people, or some companies, they have to provide some alternative park transportation. So they, yeah, so that's one way we're addressing it. And, I mean, the other, the other, the biggest issue, I think, is that we need to get that parking study done, so then we can figure out which developments we're going to allow and which ones we can do. Because if we don't solve this, we're not going to get new businesses in here. The other thing about businesses that we need to do is that we need to produce the data, because just because we want a business to come in, they will not come in because the demographics don't exist. So we need to be realistic here. We need to figure out the data, figure out what our demographics and what we can attract, and not go chasing after a white elephant, because we're just going to be spending, throwing money away for nothing. And if, if we really want that type of business, then we have to create that type of environment. So we need that data, and I think that should be part of the, the general plan, is to figure out that retail data, what is our demographics, what can we attract here, what do we need to change to, in order to, to provide, to get that demographics that the retailers crave for. Because even if people all, I saw the list, the people want this, they want a clothing store, they want this and that. That's all great, but the problem is, because of the way that the, the markets are working, which are competing with Amazons and online orders, Zippos, you know, I mean, my friend says, I don't go to stores anymore, I order online now. So we need, in order to create that retail space, the need for retail space, we have to find out what, what does the retailer's looking for, what will attract them here. So let's, let's spend a little money on planning and getting the research done.
Thank you for those comments. I did attend the High Speed Rail Local Policymakers Group last week, and one of the topics of discussion was the Millbrae High Speed Rail Station. I know that we already approved the specific plan for that area, but I think it does also, you know, affect the general plan and the PDA specific plan. So one thing that I did mention is they are doing a lot of community workshops throughout the community. Funny enough, they have not done one in Millbrae yet, but they said that they would certainly be willing to. So what I suggested is perhaps that could be incorporated as part of a general plan workshop in the future. We can maybe split the meeting into two parts, one speaking specifically about the, the High Speed Rail station, and then another about ongoing items with the specific plan, or sorry, with the general plan. But I think it's very important, you know, we've mentioned in the past, Councilwoman Papin has mentioned that it's, it's important for us to lay out a vision for these different transit agencies, and also for developers as well, as to what we want to see in that area. And so I think it's very important as they're designing, what, you know, they have an idea of what they want in that area, and we have to make sure that it will conform with what we want in that area. They said they are, you know, talking with the city frequently, and they are well aware of what we're working on Millbrae, but I would suggest, and I do have the contact information for the person, I will pass along. But I would recommend doing that as part of a, a general plan workshop in the near future.
Vice Mayor, I don't, the city staff's going, no, they're not talking to us regularly. This seems to be a problem with high-speed rail. And for the viewing audience, when the high-speed rail legislation passed, the law itself includes Millbrae as a station. So if high-speed rail does come to fruition, which some of us hope somewhere down the line, it will be a high-speed rail station. And the idea is that it connects directly to the airport and all of the other public transportation. So taking that into consideration at this point is a good idea for any plans and a vision, as the soon-to-be mayor has suggested here. We need to really bring that to the forefront as quickly as possible, because you just can't be a platform kind of thing, where you got to lug your luggage off of that, then try to get on a BART train, or try to get over to the airport. We need to have a vision, and sadly, in my prior term on the council, in early days of high-speed rail, you know, they keep changing their story. They originally told us it would be underground. Now I think they're telling the vice mayor, they got different ideas. It's just, Millbrae needs to step up and let them know what we would expect by any such station. So I agree, and I think that's a wonderful idea, Vice Mayor.
Well, it goes beyond simply the platform. They have a lot kind of mapped out, and they have kind of a whole footprint of, that they want for the station that extends well beyond the current station footprint.
And takes up probably a lot of our development, right?
It does, yes. And also, as well as the city, as well as the city corp yard property as well.
So to be clear, this is a first-time hearing. We have participated at the staff level and meetings regionally. We've asked for the information that's been shown to us at that meeting to be submitted, so we can comment and look at it and meet with them. And we've been working towards that for several months now. So we will take your suggestion and take your contact and keep trying, because I do think it's a critically important project for this community.
It might be a nice idea for the new mayor to write them a letter and invite them here for public comment.
They've said that there is a Millbrae Station Working Group, which involves high-speed rail, Caltrain, BART, SFO. The previous meeting, they didn't, they did not mention the City of Millbrae, and I corrected them on that, and I said, oh, yes, the City of Millbrae is part of that working group. So apparently there have been meetings, I know they were involved in the specific plan working group when we're discussing that, but let's, let's make sure that they are in, are aware of our plans for, for the areas.
And let's be clear, in the station area-specific plan, they were way late to the party and just kind of sat there. So there, we need to, if I would, soon-to-be Mr. Mayor, he might want to give him a little heat on this. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Councilman Schneider?
Just a couple of things that, again, post the charrette, talking to businesses, talking to Bacchus, which for the audience is a shop inside Pape's Meat Market, where they sell wine and cheese and crackers. And he was very interested in getting some of the old city benches that have been replaced. He wanted to put an area outside in front of the shop where people could sit. And I said, well, that's great, they can drink wine. And he goes, no, code won't let them drink wine. If we do go towards widening our sidewalks and providing outside seating, you usually, every city that I go to, when you sit outside, you can drink wine. Even Starbucks, with the little parklet across from them, if they start serving wine, not that I was really keen on that idea, but they should drink wine. So I'd like to make sure that we look into that. But Bacchus specifically told me that they've been told, and I don't believe it was a city entity, it was somebody outside of us that said that.
Well, I think here too, for, when it was a grocery store, there was a requirement to have parking on-site. Most of the buildings in downtown don't require it. The banks have it because in the 1960s and 70s, they wanted to occupy every corner in a downtown and have parking. So we now are looking, as other cities are, about, well, you turn those parking lots into something else. And I've actually had some conversations with them about, well, you might have been told no in the past, but.
Okay.
Let's talk some more. Regarding, now regarding Starbucks, yeah.
Just the, the wine part or the alcohol part?
Yeah, regarding Starbucks, I do know that the Alcohol Beverage Control Agency does not allow wine to be carried across a sidewalk and delivered unless you have that, is like a little playpen, pretty secured with a gate on it. Outdoor dining, like in Mountain View, where that dining is adjacent to the building and has a little corral on it, they can, they'll get an ABC license to do that, because they can control it. They have to have a person out there control, they don't want us to be New Orleans, but.
I'm just throwing it out there as something to consider. And the other question, since we have a person in the audience who I know who's brought this to me, hopefully I'm not putting them on the spot, the concern that whatever happens in the specific area, that those businesses don't steal then from Broadway. And I don't have a magic answer for that. It's just, I think it's a valid point, that the businesses work with each other and support each other. And that's another comment that's come up to me after the charrette on that. And the, the third comment is both BART, I don't, I was at a BPAC meeting, a Bicycle Pedestrian meeting, when the MTA came, I'm not sure which transportation agency, talking about high-speed rail and their desire to have stores, or BART's desire to have stores, so that patrons can shop and not have to leave the station, which to me will hurt whatever we're trying to build around the station. And I'd just like to have clarification of who gets that sales tax. So I guess I'm a little less trustful that if BART put a coffee stand up on top there. coffee stand up on top there, instead of using one of our coffee stands, we would lose sales tax.
I don't know that. It's within the city boundaries. I believe we get the.
We get the sales tax.
Anything sold within there.
I've just been told to be, be on the lookout of BART because they may be trying to get their A portion, just like with airport land use, that the airport will be trying to get more of the transportation funds that, because they're in the county.
Well, transportation funds as opposed to retail or commercial. And I think BART's way overdue in not utilizing that big station for some commercial aspect. My understanding is that they've got into a bad exclusive deal, which is now ready to expire. So the commuters would be very happy to, you know, have certain resources within the station. And I think it would benefit Millbrae as a total that we, you know, look beyond and try to have new arenas. I think that would be very helpful. So that would be kind of exciting.
So, thank you through the chair. So my question about parking this, I've just remembered this, is that are we going to be, I mean, I don't think we maybe have a blanket statement or, or vision. But, and every area has their different wants and needs for parking. But are we going to be transit oriented or are we going to be car oriented? So?
What's parking studies?
Well, that's what, no, because if you provide, if you're going for more parking, you're being more car oriented. Because you're saying, well, rather than taking transit to Millbrae, we want you to drive to Millbrae. And we're going to provide the parking for you.
You have to anticipate growth.
Yeah. So I'm not saying it's a blanket statement, but I'm just throwing it out there for us to, you know, and we really need to think about that. So that's going to, because you got to do economy here. And not every area, like I did preface, that every area is going to be different. Not the whole city. But, so that, that needs to be in the back of our minds while we're, while we're planning. That was the other thing. Should write these things down. Again, thank you for your thing out. If I remembered, I'll, I'll bring it up next time.
Any final comments? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Nelson.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Okay. And now on to council comments. And let's start with Councilman Lee.
Thank you. At the ABAG meeting, they approved a concept of design for the Bay Area One Plan. Doesn't mean they approved the plan. They're just saying, oh, okay, we want to proceed with, proceed on creating this plan. They are also, are in, are in the process of consolidating the planning department from ABAG. ABAG is the Association, Association of Bay Area Governments. It's basically all, all the governments represented in, in the Bay Area. And they pretty much do funding and housing and not transportation, MTC, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission does that. But the planning department from the ABAG is going to MTC. And that's in the process. And that has caused some confusion and it has caused some problems with our staff in which we, which there were some missed opportunities, missed opportunities. And that was because of this type of, you know, moving of staff and miscommunications. So I, you know, some of these things cannot be, even though our staff took responsibility, it wasn't really their fault. It was a matter of just bad confluences of events. Hundreds of cities have commented. And I don't know if our city commented or not. I think our housing numbers were pretty accurate.
We did.
We did, okay. I didn't see our letter, but I know a lot of the other cities had some, their numbers were too low, other cities said they were too high. San Jose voted against it because they just didn't like the height, idea. They thought that they weren't being represented. And then, let's see, on, December, the Lions Club is collecting gift cards for the needy and economically stressed families in, in around Millbrae. So if you'd like to donate, you can go to the website, just Google Millbrae Lions Club. And there, there should be a contact number there. So if you want to donate some money for a needy family, that would be really appreciated. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Snyder?
Okay. The Millbrae Historical Society is having Santa comes and visit on, I've got my calendar, just went blank, December 3rd at 1:00 PM. I think it's December 3rd. Hold on, I'll come back with that.
That sounds right.
Yeah. It's the same day as the tree lighting. So at 1:00, down at the museum, down by the train tracks, come see Santa, bring your children. At the Council of Cities Dinner last Friday, the council reminded all cities that openings on regional boards, if any of us want to recommend ourselves, the deadline is December 1st. And it's not on the agenda. I have had at least one council member from another city ask for our support. And I don't know the process for that. So I'll just throw that out there.
It's oftentimes difficult for the December meeting because we typically don't meet right before that. So I think what we've done in the past is we've taken, taken advice from council members to the mayor or the voting delegate in terms of preferences of each council member. And I would assume that would be then a public record if it's a serial type.
The mayors, the mayors do the votes. We don't do the votes, but we.
We do, the mayor does take input.
Yeah, the mayor can take the input.
Now or at a different time?
Before the, before the.
You can do it anytime. You don't have to do it right now.
It doesn't have to be on public record here?
No.
Okay.
I think it would eventually.
I'm very happy though to support incoming mayor of South San Francisco, Pradeep Gupta, for the Regional Air Quality, Bay Area Air Quality Management District. I may have missed an alpha there. So the, this is coming up. One of, the Lions Club has three big fundraisers, which is the money that goes to back into the community. And our crab feed in October was a little smaller than normal, but the next one is January 21st. If you like crab, please find a lion or go to the website that, that Vice Mayor Lee mentioned and look for that event. It's January 21st. We're not having one in March. So just to put that on your calendars right now. The Airport Roundtable has finalized our comments to the Federal Aviation Administration that include not so much that really affect Millbrae other than trying to hold off expansion of the use of runway one, which does affect Millbrae greatly. The good news is there will be a subcommittee forming in the new year to look at back blast noise, which is a Millbrae-San Bruno burling game issue, and APU noise. And credo to the new director of the airport, he's already looking into the contracts with the airlines about reducing or making sure they at least adhere to their contracts with running their online jets when they could be plugged into facility power. So he's already helping us with that. And I hope that those affected neighborhoods like Marina Vista, a little bit of Bayside Manor and the San Anselmo area are seeing a little bit of, a little more quiet on that, that aspect. But the good news is we will be having a subcommittee on back blast. So if the community is out there and you care about it, please feel free to contact me. I am going to be suggesting some new monitoring areas to pick up that particular type of noise as opposed to in-flight noise. And with that, have a happy Thanksgiving.
Just a quick comment on the appointments to regional committees. Since the deadline to apply, I believe it's December 1st, I think, is December 1st, we should wait until after December 1st to submit recommendations. But ultimately, it's, the mayor's not bound by any vote or anything. But we will certainly take input.
When is the city council dinner meeting? Do you remember?
Council of Cities.
Council of City.
I believe it's on December 16th. I have not seen an invitation come out yet.
Yes, it was confirmed Friday night that it's on the 16th, which is different than the past.
Well, we have one more meeting with incoming mayor. So, right, the installation.
Ceremonial.
Yeah, ceremonial. We can, I'm sure we can squeeze a few minutes for, for that.
Okay. And Councilman Papen?
Thank you. Again, reminders, if you didn't tune in earlier, the tree lighting here in Millbrae is December 3rd, along with a toy drive that the firefighters will be handling. So we have a lot of needy families out there. And the holiday train at the train station in Millbrae is at 5:15 on December 4th, which is lots of fun too. And might suggest, following up with council member Lee's comment regarding ABAG, we might want to forward them our transit letter that we gave to CCAG so that that gets to their attention as well. One thing that came up recently was the, several cities, CCAG are dealing with SFO, or not dealing with, but negotiating with the airport regarding sea level rising. So if we, our city staff is not a part of bargaining or dealing with, partnering with SFO, because they're going to go underwater before we are, I suggest that we also get the, get in the mix. South City reported, San Bruno reported that they were also negotiating with SFO, and I'm not sure how. So that would be helpful. Again, we should all be very thankful. Many of us have things that a lot of other people within our own community do not have. So reaching out to your fellow citizens, we have a lot of stay-ins. How many families? 50 different residents get hot meals throughout the week that you might not even be aware of that are your neighbors. So reaching out to someone is always great during the holidays. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone, and be safe.
Thank you. And on that note, I'd also like to mention the food for fines program at the library. If you have any overdue book fines, bring your canned food to.
What would you personally think?
Okay. If you bring canned food to the library, they will wipe your fines for you. And toys for the toy drive for the fire department. You can bring it anytime to the fire station or to City Hall or to the tree lighting ceremony on December 3rd. Councilwoman Papen asked me to read for the record in terms of red light cameras in fiscal year 2015, 16, the fines that came into the city were a total of $570,993. The expenses from the city were $421,121. That includes a contract with the city of San Mateo to review the footage, fees for ATS, the company that runs the machines, and administrative costs. So the net contribution to the general fund, which helps to offset our sheriff's contract, was $149,872. I believe that was a little different than the report that came in to the council a couple of months ago.
What in the newspaper?
Okay. Let's see, before we finish, I attended the MCTV board meeting. One idea that they had that I thought was a great idea was, you know, we have all of these capital improvement projects going on. We have a very ambitious capital improvement budget. So maybe to show residents, you know, where your tax dollars are at work, we could communicate those, you know, if there's going to be a project going on, let MCTV know. They could send a camera crew out there and record, you know, film some of these projects and, you know, talk to the people working on them, just so you can see what exactly is going on in our city. Let's see, I also attended, as I mentioned, the High Speed Rail meeting. They're discussing plans for the city of Millbrae Station. So important that we have a clear vision for that and that we can work productively with them. They also are working on plans for a maintenance facility in Brisbane that should be close to the Bay Shore Caltrain Station. And it's my understanding there are some conflicts with the city of Brisbane in terms of economic development plans that they have for that area where High Speed Rail wants to put in a maintenance facility. So it's important that we keep the dialogue going, let them know what we want to do.
That's okay.
What we plan to do with that idea, with that space. And finally, I also attended the commute.org board meeting. And ridership has been increasing year to year, approximately 15%. It was about 15% increase last year as well. They also had a presentation on the Dumbarton Corridor Study, which Sam Trans is working on right now. They're looking at some different options such as high speed, such as bus rapid transit along the Dumbarton Bridge, managed lanes, and also introducing a light rail or some type of rail corridor across the rail bridge going and extending to downtown Redwood City. So a lot of options there. Facebook is right in that area, right off at the end of the bridge. So they're very interested and are helping to fund the study. But likely whatever comes out of that study as a recommended option will be a very expensive project and a very expensive undertaking. So stay tuned on that. There will be many options, any opportunities for public comment for anybody who commutes in that area. That is all for tonight. I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and we will see you again next month. Do we have a, meeting adjourned. Thank you.